...to order, all board members are present, so we'll see how the choral room will do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't see anyone here for open forum or public input, so we will move to the next thing, approve agenda, changes to agenda.
Yeah, I got it. So, number, well, let's just go on the consent agenda where we have resignations. So, in the notes, we have Mrs. Diner, and I received a resignation today from Mrs. Freeland, who is junior high, high school, English and journalism. So, when you read that, those are those two.
Junior high what?
Junior high and high school, English and journalism. And then, under number 11, oh, excuse me, number 10, sorry, we're going to add a letter B, and I'll explain it here. It's a called, it's an approved resignation as an action item. You're thinking, why is that? Well, this particular resignation is from an extra duty, so the wording is different. We need to include the wording until suitable replacement is found.
Okay.
Or secured in order to, so it's just a little bit different. So, that's noted in the minutes. Mr. Berman suggested we do that, so.
Okay.
We'll find a suitable replacement. And I'll have that letter here too for you if something that you wanted to read. So, those are the two changes, like revisions.
Okay. All right, and a motion to approve agenda and changes to agenda.
Moved by whoever, and seconded by Paul to approve the agenda with those changes. Any other discussion? Very non, non, favor say a?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
All right. Any conflicts of interest that have come up? We have none so far. Good. All right, we'll move to approve consent agenda. A is accept financial reports. B is approve November minutes. C is approve claims. D, approve contracts. There is one contract for a custodial position and one contract for a .5 sped paraprofessional. E is a resignation. This resignation is from Mrs. Diner, who teaches high school biology and physiology. Mrs. Freeland also, as well, has resigned. She's junior high and high school, English and journalism. F is accept anonymous donation. This is a $5,000 donation to the elementary school from a donor who wishes to remain anonymous. Proceeds are left up to administration and staff to determine how best to utilize the donation. All right. Need a motion to approve.
Second. Moved by Sean Fowler, seconded by Leishner to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Very non, non, favor say a?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
All right. Next is information discussion, staff reports. I'll start with high school principal.
Don't really have a whole lot with the new school year beginning, the new semester. We've got classes assigned to everybody. We're starting to get wrapped up, or ramped up for graduation stuff. We've been making contacts, getting everything ordered and that kind of stuff there. So, we're moving in the right direction. Seniors, you know, last semester, they're starting to get a little itchy. It's fun to see. We did have an assembly this last week. We had a gentleman come in. He talked about looking at the big picture, some, how to make the right choices. He had lived a life where he'd gone through some, made some really bad choices throughout his life and kind of discussed those with the kids and, you know, not living in the now, but also understanding how choices now can affect things down the road. So, have had a lot of positive feedback from all of the students, so that went over very well.
That was for high school and junior high?
Yes, junior high, high school is kind of what, some of the seventh graders get a little antsy after about an hour, but they were pretty good. Most of the kids were completely locked in, so that was about all the lower we could have gone in.
Sure.
Yep, something different. I don't do very many of those, so it was kind of a, and it was a good time with the semester just starting, so that went over pretty good. So, from there, you know, we're just kind of trying to get everything rolling and going. That's what I got for you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Not too much on my end either, just getting back in the groove of things. It was pretty good. It was a lot of fun seeing all the kids get back in the building this last week and connecting with friends and teachers in the elementary world. It's fun to see those smiles and everybody being really excited. Getting back in our routine, our monthly mindset this month is attitude to gratitude, which kind of fits well with just where we are at right now with things, and so we'll be talking about that with staff. One of the things that was a little bit tricky for us last week is we had three days in a row at the end of the week where we couldn't get outside for recess. So, kids get a little stir crazy, but I think teachers and everybody handled that with grace, and the kids made it through. You know, I had little guys coming down to my office saying, hey, I think we're at like one degree, can we go outside today? You know, I'm like, oh guys, the wind is ever-changing, so we're gonna, you know, so they were all feeling it, but looks like we're gonna have a good week here of getting back outside, and the kids did a nice job with that. So, we're getting back in the flow of things. Nothing too exciting yet to talk about as far as that goes, but AD report-wise, we had the classic over the break. That went really well. Had a really good turnout of people coming to watch those games, so I think we had good competition in here. You know, our gate was a lot larger than it was even last year. We're, and we had one less game, so I thought that spoke well about the quality of teams we had and the way that our teams are competing right now as well. So, kind of just getting things ramped up again with, you know, that, and we just finished a pretty long spell of having home events, and now we're gonna head to the road here for a little while, but, you know, everything is seemingly going well and not too much to report on that. Little B's coming up here in a couple of weeks. That's a big event for, for our school and for our community. That's on the 22nd, so we're sending invites out to that and starting to get that thing organized and proceeding in that way, so that's all I have for you guys tonight.
Thank you. All right. Mr. McKinnon?
In my notes there, you can see the, I don't have any more on the armory entrance other than the question that I posed was, do we feel comfortable, but we've got a few more eruptions going on in that area in front of the trophy case, kind of what was when it started, and I know if we start into one of those, it's probably gonna end up looking like the way it does now. So, I talked with Mr. Reidenbach, and they got the product and they're waiting to obtain it, so we're just kind of waiting in that, whether we should or we shouldn't. He felt that even if we did that portion, he felt it's viable in the product, what his research, what the salesmen is tells him, then if we waited then to do the rest of it, if that's what you wanted to do, that it would blend. You wouldn't see this, you wouldn't be able to say, well, they stopped here and then they started here, you know, if we do something in the spring or in the summer, you know, to try and fix the rest of that flooring, so that's where we're at on that.
Mr. McKinnon, what's that product? What is, I mean, do you put it on top of stuff or?
So, he described the process to Craig and I as to bringing in a grinder in there and opening up the pores in the cement that's existing, and then it's, it's like a Torazo, but I think it even has maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, but was it an epoxy-based concept? Even though it's a cement, a polymer type of deal, that it's gonna be like self-leveling? I mean, you'll pour it into that spot and then you kind of, I mean, you'll squeeze it to get it where it goes, and then it just kind of finds its own, seeks its own level depending on how much you put on there, you know, so, but he tells me it is a cement-based product.
Compared to the glue and rock that the one, that's what, the way I take it as Torazo is, is basically just an epoxy glue with some rock chip set it.
Yeah.
Right?
And we're hoping this is a more of a permanent fix, not just, actually, correct?
Yeah, well, in his concept there was, he feels confident by the mistake prior to that, from what he could see, the floor preparation before this piece was put in, there was no floor prep.
Sure.
And he accounted that, he could, he found no tile underneath there.
Ah, okay.
Yep, and he found.
The glue marks.
Yeah.
From the cement.
So, they never.
From the old stuff.
They never took that cement and opened up all those pores so that Torazo could adhere to that pad that was there. His, that was his synopsis on it, so.
That was an expensive trial.
Yeah. Well, and that's how we, obviously, we're trying to avoid that mistake.
I got it.
Yeah, so, then that's where, if we wait, you know, maybe we tried that product in that spot that is, you know, right now, let him open it up with the pores, grind it, put it in there and see where it happens before we go all the way through the bathrooms to the west there, so.
How long does the space have to be closed off?
You know, I think, if I remember right, the conversations that he had was when he first did it, that, you know, I mean, you're probably looking at a week, you know, to, if they come in and got it done, opened it up, put it in there and then let it set, you know, for a week's time. That's just it, what I put in my notes. I'm not sure if we can find our window until the winter season is over.
Is the solution we have now good enough, you think? Just having the rug over it and waiting?
Yeah.
As long as more of it necessary.
Peeling away.
Peeling away.
I haven't heard any complaints about the way, what we're dealing with right now aesthetically. I mean, I mean, it, nobody said anything. We were just more concerned, because I actually was gawking, eating popcorn and looking at the trophies in the trophy case, and if I hit one of those bumps, and I just, I just about went over myself. I mean, that's how we rubbed it, that one got, and like, I wasn't paying attention to what I was doing, so, but if we, we talked about making sure that those are marked so people are aware.
Sure. And putting tables over them or something so they don't walk across.
Exactly.
Along.
Because it is pretty close to the trophy cases, you know. So, that's that.
He did say he can make it look very similar to the Torazo, too. They talked about where it could have that rock chip appearance to it.
Yeah.
It's a lot of things they can do with it.
So, we'll just wait then?
I think so, yeah. And I talked with him too, and, and he said he would get back to me. They were supposed to have a team meeting last Wednesday. Well, I'm gonna have to probably reach out to him again, so. I don't have anything on, when I package, you know, the Esther dollars, girls softball, we didn't circle back yet, but we plan to. We'll do that for February, so we make sure that our numbers are solid. I put that information in there only because we wondered who was maybe gonna play in our area, so there's a couple of those teams that I think locally, there may be some competition there if that helps make a decision, you know, we'll have, we'll have some deeper conversations, you know, with that once we get solid numbers on the girls who are actually gonna commit to the program. And I'd like to say that we're not locked in. We're not. We can always get out, but when we submit the form, I mean, they truly want to know, are you in or out, because they want to start forming up regions and, and wondering, you know, as to what that's gonna look like on the footprint from the activities association. So, we have to submit that form in February.
I have a question.
Yep.
If we don't do a program and a student would want to play somewhere else, do they have the opportunity, if there's a school locally, that they could?
So, we would have to create a co-op, you know, and, and enter into it from that perspective. And these teams that I put in your notes there, that I think a lot of them are looking at cooperative opportunities in order to, to offer the sport. Scotland mental for sure is what I was told. That's what they're, the route they're looking at, so, but yeah, I mean, the opportunity would not be lost if we don't offer it ourselves as a school district, and it's just whether your partner then would want to allow a cooperative, because you have to have the consent of the two school districts or three, or however many you're doing.
I think the last time we talked about Ethan too, didn't we? Did we have that discussion?
Yeah, Ethan, well, I haven't, I haven't talked to Mr. Hawkins about that, but I know they had a, they have a faction there too, and somebody brought them up in our conversations, and Mr. Hawkins wasn't there when we were having that conversation, but I don't know if they planned on traveling that route and offering the sport or not. I do not know, so. And then, that's all I got, you know, am I gonna address the information I put on custodial? So, I mean, you got the information there, so unless you had a question about that, so that's all I got.
All right. We will move to discussion items. First discussion item is a facility used by the public. The board will discuss current facility use policy and procedures by the public per patron inquiry about facility use.
I guess I'll just prep that and turn it over to you guys. If you recall, I mean, Mr. Derniger was here in December and I think, you know, had this, we had facility on their access, armory access, I guess, and I think he assumed it was this particular concept rather than her front door and the mess that we had over there. So, you know, I suppose I might bring this forward, this notion. He asked a question, I mean, he gave you some public comment about that opportunity, the viability of, is that something that's been done? And I, I understand, I think that's been brought up before, from what I've been told in, at the board level as to whether you should allow the public or what depth you should allow the public, what depth you should allow students within the facilities. So, I put those two policies in your packet, that that's what I could find in your current policy manual that addresses utility, facility use, whether it's by students or as a whole. So, I'll, I guess, leave it up to you guys for a conversation.
What do you got for that, Stan?
Well, I can just tell you a little history.
Okay.
And again, we, this is a few years ago, but that's when we had keys, and so we were left in different, if they worked through the AD, so you went double book space and so on and so forth, but there got to be a lot of keys out there. And so, then you got people coming in wherever they wanted to, and, and some of those issues with that were, they were unsupervised. And like I say, we got a different set of kids. That was a few years ago, so maybe, maybe they're a better set of kids, not that they were bad before, but we had issues. So, we had extra keys, we had issues of kids getting a little bit of trouble, and then we had, we had a team made up of different girls in the area. It was kind of an AAU team, and they would come in. And so, then, of course, some of our kids would see kids from other school districts in there playing on the gym and it would not give them the opportunity to play, so. So, there was just some stuff going on at that time, so I'm all in favor of, we got facilities here, let's use them, it's just, I don't know how you.
What you do.
How you, and, and I'm not a coach, and I get it, you know, you want players to, if they want to practice, I am all for that too. So, so, there's gotta be some common ground, and I know that's why we have you, Mr. McKinnon, and that's why we have the other administrative people here, so.
Well, I'm gonna say that with that, I know what John's talking about there with, a couple summers ago, I, I was one of those summer coaches for the sacred hoops basketball, the classic that we just played in, and I coached a team, and they always asked me, can we just practice at your place? And I, I never brought it to you because I knew how it was in the past, and if it's not being used and you do, you know, those kids are a little different. I don't know if they would have rented or not. We ended up going to Hartford a lot and practicing.
Sure.
Instead of here, but a lot of the kids were from Platte, Bonham. It was a lot closer to practice here, but we didn't, we never did ask.
And I don't, Craig, you know, be honest, I don't have any problem with that if it isn't being used.
Yeah.
But, but again, there's just.
And those kids were different than I think what your traveling was, because traveling basketball now compared to, that was before my time here, if I remember right too, so prior to that, they pay to play now there during the summer things.
You go somewhere to play.
And they're, and they're paying a fee to them.
Yeah.
Now, the question is, do you want to rent that to them or not and things like that? But I just never did bring it up at the time. It would've been a lot more convenient for a lot of the kids, but we got in at Hartford and got to practice with other teams, so it worked out well.
So, do you guys have, Mr. McKinnon, do you have an issue with having people have combinations to get in the school whenever they want to?
Um.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I know, so I put in my notes, past experiences. I've traveled this path early on in my career in the superintendent's seat with my previous school board, and we kind of went round and round, and I understand when you're sitting in this chair, there's things that I think we as administrators take into consideration. You guys as a school board is liability, you know, other things that can happen, whether it's vandalism, destruction, accountability, everything along those lines, and, you know, I did my best to paint a picture to them that you're inherently, if you open the doors, so to speak, and allow people to come in and use the facility, which, that's kind of where they hung their hat. Listen, it's, it's paid for by taxpayers, it's funded by tax dollars, they pay their deal, let them come in and use it. And I said, okay, I'm okay with that, but, you know, where's, where's the compromise like you already suggested? You know, we just can't be nilly-willy about it and have it free rein. And they said, no, that's not what we're talking about, but how can we craft it so there is that level of accountability? And I realized that, at the time, I was like, you can't do this. You can't let somebody, I can't let a 17-year-old come into the weight room lifting weights and falls on him, breaks an arm, busts a chest or whatever. I said, we're gonna get sued. They weren't having it. They were not, they understood it, but they were not gonna relent on, it's the public's facility, it's funded by taxpayers' dollars, it's paid for in that fashion, so I just kind of like, okay, so how do we fix it? Well, I talked with Tony a little bit about this, but essentially, art rate was 50 bucks. It was pretty cheap. 50 bucks, fob, gives the fob, I can record the number on the fob, so in the software, I can tell you who's in here, I can tell you what time they're in here, what fob was used to do that, I mean, in our old facility, plus we had cameras, so if something went amiss, if something went awry, I mean, I can go back and look, you know, and 16 years, we never had one incident. Not one incident of theft, not one incident of vandalism, not one incident of inappropriate use in that facility, because it was established, kids, you're getting this opportunity, and if you screw it up, it's done. You will never have this opportunity again. So, they did a great job of policing themselves, policing others, so, yeah, we had kids in the weight room, and you talk about supervision, there are no adults there. They're in the gym, John, they're shooting baskets, they're putting up 1,000 shots. Where's adult? There is none. They're playing five-on-five, or they're playing three-on-three, or it's you and me going in and shooting 1,000 shots with a Dr. Dish or whatever, or they're, they got the volleyball nets and they got the thing out and they're, you know, practicing the kills, things of that nature. So, could it be done? I, I think, if it's done the right way, I think you can do that. I mean, I'm not saying that that was golden up there, and I'm not saying it was all great and kumbaya and everything was copacetic, but we really never did have to address, and that the privilege was never revoked on the board's part because of anything that was inappropriate as to how it was used. So, me personally, well, me professionally, does it make me nervous? Yeah, it really does make me nervous, says the guy that sits in the chair. But I was not gonna win that battle with that school board at that time, and they gave me the directive, then fix it. We did. Here's how it's gonna work, and, you know, they've been ever since, and, you know, Mr. Derniger's comment is, you know, how do you, how do you come in and, how do you get 1,000 shots up when you can't get in to the, to the facility?
Sure.
So, I don't know. That's just my two cents. I told you I would explain what my past experiences with it, so.
I would just add something to what's going on after the last board meeting. At my principal's meeting, I went in and just asked, took a survey, kind of a general one, and there wasn't everybody there, but it was pretty much all over the board. I did bring up, well, for the ones that charged to get a fob, how much, and I said, we were looking at $50. There was $100 for the majority, 50 would've been the low number for the group. There were a couple that, nothing, can't get in there, period, we lock it up, but the majority had some way of getting in somehow, whether it was a parent signed stuff, or you had the key fob, or it was used like a community center type of a deal. And that was, you know, anymore, a lot of schools have a community center attached, so that was just part of it. So, just to let you know that, to kind of get an idea of what locals or other districts are doing it, more allow them than not, but there were some that just said no, so.
Essentially, if you, if you lost your fob, they'll give you another 50 bucks, and they did. I mean, more than once, you know, so, I mean, was it probably too cheap? I don't know. But, I mean, we had adults in there too, using the weight room, I mean, kids, young adults, adults, everything under the spectrum.
Was there a certain time?
Ah, well, so, back to your question, it's a good point. So, we made it sure that everybody understood that every school activity took precedent. So, if the fourth and fifth graders showed up Saturday morning and there happened to be somebody in there, then you're done. I mean, they, when we give them that information and they signed the paper and we gave them their fob and they gave us the dollars, I mean, again, we've never had anybody say, well, I was here first. They knew that ahead of time, so whatever school function was happening, and we didn't have to, never had a master calendar, although we did for school activities if somebody happened to be in there. And if you see a bunch of little guys rolling in, or whether it was with parents, and typically that young, they were with parents, you know, but other than that, they shared, they shared the space. Say we had girls in there doing volleyball, you know, some boys came in and wanted to shoot some buckets, they shared the space. Nobody said, you get out of here, we were here first, you can't do that, well, we were here. I mean, we just never really had that. But we prepped the kids about it too. We really hammered them as to what the expectation was, so, sorry, man.
No, that's fine. I was just gonna say, I mean, I agree with both sides of that. I mean, it's a public building, we need to use it when we can, but it really makes me nervous just having any kids being able to come in here whenever they want. That really makes, I mean, is it, one, one thought I had was maybe to grant more access and take some of the weight off the coaches, could we have, you know, like volunteers that would, you know, adult volunteers that could, you know, at certain times, open whatever facility, you know, get a couple from each different activity maybe, and just, you know, that would maybe help some, but I'd be really hesitant just to open a wide open, I guess.
I would say typically, I don't think it's like a group of people. It's like one kid who wants to come and shoot hoops or lift weights or, because Maya, like, we come at night, late at, like 9:30 sometimes, 10 o'clock, or just depends on the day or what's going on, but she'd never, we never usually bring like a group of people. It's usually just her, and I would say if we run into anyone, it's usually one kid that's here doing something by themselves, so I don't know.
What's our policy again right now? Right now? Who has keys or, I mean?
Coaches, teachers.
Staff members.
Staff members.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I can see both sides of the coin. I mean, I, I don't know if having volunteers or coaches, I don't know if we draw enough of a quantity of people to make it really worth our time there. I mean, it's a good idea. I, I don't know. As far as setting up like a fob system, do we have capabilities of doing that right now? I mean, would that be?
We have.
And as far as camera coverage, do we have?
Well, I think with the camera coverage, you could lock enough doors to lock down that they only could get in the NPR.
I was wondering, yeah. Everything else can be.
The only question would be from, you know, getting into the, if the kids wanted to get into the wrestling room, that elementary door on that side over there, Tony, because you can push it through, right? Remember, this side locks this way, so does that side.
You tell them, the glass doors?
Where they could, no, well, the glass doors are on the wrong side of the wrestling room. I'm talking these doors just right out here by the, by the ball cage, there's those two wooden doors.
Right.
They push the wrong way to lock off the elementary. Too bad we didn't have doors that went this way down that elementary hallway, then you could lock.
Well, Craig.
The two ends off.
If they could, coming out of the wrestling room, if you lock the glass doors and this elementary door, that's all they can get into is that short hallway. You can't get in this way, so you have to come through the back way.
You'd have to come into that back storage room.
And then you lock everything up. You'd have to open up that storage room, otherwise you could lock everything else off. You could lock off at the lunchroom.
Yeah.
Because those doors lock going that way.
Yep.
You can lock these doors on both sides that completely isolate, so you just, it would just be that little stretch.
Yeah.
But I can't remember. But I can't remember if the wrestling door is on which side.
It goes glass doors, wrestling door.
Elementary.
Is there another elementary door over here?
No, just the elementary door.
This way, and see, that one opens the wrong way, that's the problem.
No, you can't get in this way. You can.
You'd lock the wrestling room door.
You can lock that right now, because I've done it before.
Not right now, you come in this way, don't you, and you push right through.
You push, you're talking this door right here, you have to push.
Push out?
Yeah.
But they would have to come in the back.
Right.
Way to get to the wrestling room.
Right. And then do you open locker rooms? Do you, those are all questions too.
But the camera and the armory. Coverage in those areas are pretty good, aren't they, Tony? Down that NPR hallway?
Yeah.
There are no camera covers in the locker rooms, right?
No, the locker rooms without.
We can't quite go that far.
I'm talking the hallway down that NPR.
Just lock that part off, and, you know?
Otherwise, if you open up the armory, then it's not a problem. You lock the high school in, you lock the elementary in, and they've got access to everything in the middle.
Yeah.
Me personally, I'd rather have our kids here, shooting, honing their craft, you know, something of that nature, than sitting at home on some sort of video machine or running around town and getting in trouble. I mean, that's, you know, and I do understand your plight one hundred percent as steward of our school. It's, I mean, it's, I don't know, it's something you take our time with.
Yeah, certainly. We can craft it, we can start working on it.
At least, at least take a look at it. I mean, it's nothing that we have to say a year and a year right now and just see what our options are, see what it would look like, and go from there. What are you, what's your thoughts on that?
I agree, I think we can look at it. I also agree that it's a little bit, I mean, I understand the legality issue for sure, but you hate to hear people driving to Mitchell, or, you know, if you want to foster your, the kids in your community, it's.
I know lots of kids from other communities who do it, and they don't ever have issues.
In my hometown, we also, it was the same concept. We had a key fob, everything else was locked down. And honestly, I can't, my dad was the superintendent there, and I can't really remember many issues. I think people are fairly respectful of it, for the most part.
With the key fob situation, this is just, I'm just pondering this now. Okay, let's say I'm Johnny, and I've got a couple of my buddies, and we all play. I, as long as I have the key fob, we all can get in, whoever I let in.
You're responsible for every.
Yep.
Type of that.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just, I'm just curious.
One thing I'd like to just bring up, just from student perspective and, you know, thinking about, I think it's really important when we have these conversations to also just, you know, I think a lot of times, you know, old-school thought is, well, what about those one or two kids that would maybe ruin this? What about trusting the majority of our kids to do the right thing and police it? I think that's an important thing just for us to consider as a group, you know, because oftentimes, it's like, well, I know there's a couple of kids that I wouldn't really trust getting in here. I can think of some of them, you know? And I was probably friends with a lot of them growing up too, but there are, you know, a lot of good ones that are gonna do the right thing. And I think that's a really important mindset when, when we think about making a decision like this, that I'd like to just voice is just consider the good of all those students rather than just one or two that might go and ruin it, and then we put it on the kids, you know, or put it on the community, you know? And then if they ruin that for themselves, then they did, but.
But that's what happened last time.
That trust.
So, so, again, I'm open, you know, I'm open to that, but.
How long ago was that?
That was before you guys' time.
Not that long ago then?
Right. But, but again, it might have been that set of students, you know, every set of students a little different.
That they had vandalism and stuff like that in here? Gotcha.
Yep.
Did we have the cameras back then? And did we, were we able to say, okay?
What was the security then?
You know?
That's the thing I'm thinking, like, if somebody gets in trouble, you can say, you're done. You don't have to say the whole group is done. If you know who did it or who was involved, you can, you know, those couple or one can be in trouble, or, and you can have a liability form if you take a fob. Have them sign the liability form so that if something does happen, they know their kid is here by themselves. You know, if they would break their wrist or something would happen.
And to kind of piggyback off Mr. Fisher's statement, I mean, this, this could really inspire, you know, another group of students to hone their craft and, you know, pick up new interests, possibly basketball or whatever, I mean.
Yeah.
We, I'd have to go back into law, but we didn't let, like, seven and eight-year-olds and nine-year-olds and ten-year-olds in.
What?
I mean, Mom, Mom gave me the fob. I'm the ten-year-old, and I've got three of our buddies going in. Parents were with in that situation. We were talking junior high and high school age kids who typically had, I don't, you know, an open-door policy where they took care of it, policed it, you know, utilized the facilities, and, you know, always left it the way they found it, you know? So, I think there is some stipulations, obvious.
Or like an older sibling that could bring a younger sibling, or a certain age, could bring their ten-year-old brother or sister, yeah.
And that happened a lot. In fact, even the parents, you know, a Sunday at two o'clock, you'd be shocked. Like, Sunday at two o'clock, I mean, especially at this time of the year, what else is there to do? You know, if you weren't in the outdoor sport aspect or winter sports and, I mean, but people were always respectful. You had maybe three or four families get together, or three or four families showed up at the same time not knowing anybody else would be there. And they worked collaboratively with the space and never got into an argument about, we were here first. No, we were here first, so. And I would have never dreamt it in a million years when I first got there. I was, it was a fight, I was not going to win. You gotta pick your battles.
Sure.
So, I'm like, okay, this is on you guys, not me. I warned you. Be aware, your superintendent says, don't do this, and they're like, yep, we get it, but we're gonna do it.
Were they allowed to use school, like, basketballs, volleyballs and all that as well? It was.
The only thing they did not have access to was the PE equipment. And that was in a whole different room, and it, there was only one key to that room. And she had it. And trust me, there was nobody else getting in there, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think we, if you guys want to work on a policy and figure out how, I mean, we can start somewhere at least, and if you guys come with a draft, we can look at it and see if we have suggestions of other things we've thought of, so. Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else?
Um.
You have paraprofessionals?
Yeah, so, on your discussion.
Okay, so B is paraprofessional remote flex day. The board will discuss current pay and accountability expectations for classified paraprofessionals on days when students are learning from home due to either COVID or inclement weather.
Mr. Bruni probably has more history on this than I do, but, I mean, I put in notes there too as to, I don't know if it was a forgotten faction of employees, you know, some of them asked, you know, well, what are we supposed to do? Or do we get an opportunity to work that day? And we do, yeah, never thought about that, because they're really not in a position to work when we are remote, you know, to work collaboratively. Some of them said, well, teacher said I could run some copies off. And I'm like, I'm not sure that's what we want to be doing, you know, with our time and expend the dollars in that format. And they understood that, but Craig and I visited about, okay, what if this continues? You know, maybe we have to shut down here. You know, what do we do with those people to afford them an opportunity for recoupment of potential dollars lost because they didn't get a chance or an opportunity to work? So, we just wanted some clarification. That remote flex day in December was due to more of an inclement weather, but we kind of said, oh, well, let's try it. You wanted to try it, here's a perfect opportunity to try it. You know, so typically, weather, Craig, you guys.
In the past, weather-related ones, when you didn't make them up, they didn't get paid. Or if you made them up, if you, you know, like, let's say there was five days, snow days, and you only made three of them up, well, those classified people only got paid for those three that you made up. Those other two that you didn't make up, they lost that income. Now, I know during the COVID shutdown portion last year, we did pay them, but that was also with some COVID money.
Right.
But with this situation, you know, they couldn't, if it's a weather-related day, you don't want them driving in here making copies. So, we talked about maybe, you know, finding things for them to do at the end of the year or something to give them those days still or something, I don't know. That's what we're wondering, what we need to do.
So, we pay them anyway, and then they would work the days at the end of the year?
They would get paid at the end of the year when they made them up.
Oh, okay.
Just like you did in the past for weather-related days.
Okay.
Type of, or do you just pay them? Or what, you know, what do you do with them? Because they're not really contracted, they're hourly people. But, lost, you know, you had seven snow days, they lose, you don't make them up, they lose out on a week's worth of pay. I mean, it's never been that drastic. I mean, usually it's one or two days.
I would assume there's plenty of stuff to do in the last couple of days of school, after school is out.
Well, we've done it in the past, and some of them, then they don't show up, and, but it's their choice, then at least.
And we wouldn't pay them until they showed up for work, right?
That's how we've done it in the past, yeah. Like, even that, even during COVID, we had the opportunity, they could come in and help clean, and some of them elected to come in and clean our vans, and they did a, you know, they took the vans in the shop and thoroughly cleaned them. I mean, some of them elected to, some of them elected not to do anything at all. I mean, you could have them do that at the end of school. I mean, there's some things.
This particular.
They might not like some of the things.
Yeah, right. Well, in this particular school, you're noted, if the HVAC project comes to fruition for us and the lighting, I mean, teacher's been kind of put on notice that, you know, they're gonna have to probably be a little bit more efficient in cleaning out your rooms when otherwise, you know, because of the cleanliness of it and the peak, the access and things like that. So, I could certainly see paraprofessionals who choose to do that, helping teachers pack up more than they're usually used to packing up and taking it out of the building and getting it out of the, you know, so certainly could recoup some time there. But there are those menial tasks, I think probably either custodial or maintenance that we could offer from an assistance perspective, but there, again, at least the opportunity is there. If you want to do it, then don't do it. You know, and it wasn't like they all lined up at the door when they came to me. There was a few of them that said, hey, Mr. Um, and probably because of a necessity that they were looking to make sure that, you know, the income was probably still there, or at least the opportunity at some point was still there. So, it wasn't, it wasn't like they all came to me and said, you're cheating us. That wasn't the case, so. We just, when Craig and I talked about it, not knowing what past practice was, you know, they never got an opportunity to make them up, they never got paid for during the course of the year. But at the end of the year, if you guys as a school board said, hey, inclement weather, or, you know, in this case, remote flex learning, we're not adding back to the calendar.
So, they don't, they're not gonna get that opportunity?
Opportunity to do that unless you give them something intentionally at the end of the school, so.
I know it's there, fine, if we, yeah, if we had things for them to do.
And offer it to them, and the ones that want to, they can.
Yeah.
If you don't, you don't have to.
Do you agree?
Yeah, I mean, we do a lot of work during the summer. So, if they didn't want to do it right away, would they have the opportunity during the summer, Craig? Possibly. I'm just asking. This, this beginning of summer might be a little different, who knows? You know, we don't know what the HVAC project will look like, and. Right. They might be in here already, who knows? I mean, I don't know, but we didn't talk about that, we didn't think that far ahead, no.
But they just have to have the work completed by July first? Is that when they do?
Um, for them, preferably, if they got, to be honest with you, John, it'd be best they did it in May because we take out all their deductions for their June and July.
Okay.
Um, and I wouldn't have a problem giving them any option of May. The question is, what, you know, it might help out because some teachers might not do it right away, so maybe some need it after the last week, or, you know?
I'm fine with.
I would think as long as it's done by May thirty-first, it wouldn't be a headache.
Okay. Offer it to them if they want to?
Yeah. Because then you could pay them in their last paycheck like normal.
Sure. Do we need a motion for this?
No, I think it's more of a clarification as to, you know, how we expect them to, and the opportunities we're gonna provide for them. But it's a motion as much as it is clarification.
And right now, it's one day, so we'll see how many it's up here.
Yeah, hopefully the weather holds, and we don't, COVID holds, and we don't have any problems.
All right. Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll move on to C, facility expansion in addition. The board will discuss and consider feedback from administration on ideas and the necessity for expansion of the current facility.
So, we kind of dropped that bomb on you last December, and you're all kind of like, whoa, what are you, what are you thinking? What are you talking about? Is, can it be possible? So, we played with it a little bit, we met as an admin team. I think the easiest way for us to show you this is to give you a little, the easiest way to do this, little Google Earth here, we're gonna play with Google Earth, this is your plan. And lots of little windows to look at. So, you can kind of see the physical footprint of your facility as it sits today. It is pretty current. It doesn't tell me what year that was from, but if you can see to the athletic complex to the right, it looks like it's turned key, like it exists.
It's July two thousand fifteen.
Where are you seeing that, Mr.?
Uh, lower to the left, right next to a hundred percent.
Seven twenty-one fifteen, there you go. Anyway, where would, where could you do this? You know, if you wanted to increase your footprint, um, there's opportunities. We just kind of talked about as a, as an admin team, a couple places. I can do some measuring here for you if you wanted me to, but, so you have this, this is kind of what we talked about with the playground. Okay, maybe we put on some of that old Y. Well, if we wanted to connect this in some way, shape, or form, and you certainly can't connect it here, but there's a way to do it, obviously. You could put a footprint, like, right here. Um, you could put, sorry. I'll make you a woozy. Here's, you could, you could put a footprint right here, about this size, over here, and somehow attach through here, and then make another entry here to admin space here. So, there's an opportunity that where you could put that footprint. Um, or, and offer this facility footprint. Or, here's a footprint, and then some sort of thoroughfare, or maybe it's a stand-alone. So, I think the physical location, thinking that, well, God, there's really no place we can do any of this, you can. This facility here, I believe, I'll show you, we're gonna measure this. Oh, this, maybe it was telling me, Tony, oh, here we go. Oh, meters, how did they change that? Sorry, let's go. I was playing this on my desktop, sorry. This is my, I want to clear it up. I don't want to change it to feet. I'm not a meters guy, I don't know if you guys are. Okay. Well, that facility, I suspect, it's not totally accurate, it's somewhere between eighty and eighty-five foot wide. So, I'll look it up. Clear, I guess, thirty. And I believe it's.
Hundred and twenty, wasn't it?
Hundred and forty? Around roughly one twenty, one twenty-five, somewhere in there. So, that's eighty by one twenty-five, that's your NPR. Um, this, this is your, this is your armory. One twenty-five to one thirty, somewhere in there. I mean, lines aren't particularly straight, I get it. And then I think it was by a hundred, yes, a little bit bigger. Hundred and fifteen, that's a little long, one, you have two, one, one tan, maybe? So, these areas, this is, that, it's all of this footprint, and then some, this, this footprint here is all of this footprint that exists here.
Thought we, in that parking lot there, Mr. Wick, and I believe we could almost go one twenty by one twenty in the front parking lot, it's pretty close.
Yep. Yep.
With a little angle there, of course, but I mean.
Adjust to the building there.
And there was well over that in the other spot, depending on what you connect to.
I mean, obviously, we have all the, we have AC units sitting here. You certainly don't attach it to the building here, there's gonna be a thoroughfare here, but this footprint out here is huge. I mean, and somehow you can tie it. And if you didn't tie it, stand alone, at least there's access, you could put a thoroughfare or something, and, you know, that's what architects.
One thing we also thought of there in that footprint is with those, didn't Mr. Um bring up something about a possible hall? a possible hallway for those back windows? To as well as to connect it right to the elementary, maybe? We don't know because we're not an architect, but.
Yeah, then you'd have to move the air conditioners into the ceiling and do some of that stuff there.
But we don't know what would be most financially feasible.
Right, and you could almost bump it right up against the.
Armory or.
Or the shop area, but then how are you getting in the building from there? Then you've got to add a different entrance, so. Everything's got its wrinkles.
I think you'd almost have to make a hallway there that might fill in with a lot of snow.
But again, that's. Also, as I got you here, I would like to show you this too, that this, this parking lot right here. So we have seven vehicles constantly sitting out here. So I would propose, if, if, if that's one thing you want to do is build that storage facility that's got access for vehicle storage, things like that, you could certainly expand this. You take these trees out of here, put them over here in this boulevard. And this little facility right here, I mean, you could cement that in, you could put like a lean tube style, you know, 12 foot to eight foot, 10 foot to eight foot, whatever, whatever you wanted, slant back towards the ditch. You could put a one, uh, a, a larger door where you come in and you come, park at, pick a vehicle in, angle, vehicle in at an 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 angle.
One door out.
Put some storage space on that. That's an opportunity to look at too. Again, probably a steel structure, I get it, but one can dress it up with some leans coating and they do all kinds of neat things with that stuff now where aesthetically it could, it would be not totally unappealing, I don't think, with the footprint, you know, especially on this side. We talked about this too. If you did put something here, this structure, whether that's a steel structure or something that's brick and mortar, because your whole facade on this side is all brick, right? And it's specific to a color. If you have that standalone, uh, steel erection type of deal, is that, is it a sore thumb? Is it aesthetically unappealing? If you put a steel structure back here, kind of out of sight, out of mind concept, where you're not really gonna get a visual, a real visual that's, you know, constantly traffic through here. I mean, I get it, some people didn't have to look at it at some point in time, but those are just some ideas, you know, that we wanted to show you that that's the case. Reasons and rationale, why would we, why would we do that? Why would we want to expand the footprint? And also things that we talked about, well, for one, you know, we have a wrestling room that is inadequate for space perspective. I know it's been that way for a long time. And that's what you're gonna hear, well, it was good enough for me 20 years ago, it was good enough for me five years ago, it was good enough for me 10 years ago. What's wrong with it now? Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I suspect you're still not farming with the same stuff you were 10 years ago. Maybe I'm.
We still got some teachers that are 10 years old.
So what I think, the necessity for expansion on your footprint is access to program. You have a lot of youth programs, uh, whether that's, uh, uh, we talked about a little bit about gymnastics, competitive cheer, we talked about baseball, potentially if we add softball in the spring of the year. We talked about youth programs in your, your, uh, basketball programs, I think. We have kids, especially at the junior high level, that they're coming in here for six o'clock practice, sometimes quarter to six. Why? Because what's happening at the end of the day, the facilities are already equipped, or if they're coming back late at night after something like that to have a practice session. Now, if we got a little third and fourth readers and fourth, third, fourth, fourth, fifth type of environment or five, six. Yeah, so I think, um, you know, coming into your system and watching that and learning that and listening and stuff that, you know, certainly there's opportunities to provide better experiences and expanding experiences for those people who are involved in those activities and running those activities. So I guess.
Weight room was another one that you didn't bring up.
Oh, sorry.
And storage.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's good, great equipment in your weight room, you know, but, uh, I mean, the, the access, the space within that, I mean, it's nothing. Again, it's one of those things, it's worked. Yeah, you're right, it has worked. So, I mean, you always have to battle that, I think, with no matter who you're talking to.
Getting a group or a team of 20 to 40 football players in there is tough.
That don't work.
The way it's laid out.
Yeah, I don't even know how you could get 10 people in there working.
10 is about, I mean, right now we have five racks in there and the, the width isn't wide enough to put down the platforms that came with the racks, because we bought them used from Northern University. And they wouldn't fit in there. Because, uh, the room wasn't wide enough. They only had this much space between the wall and the plat, where the platform was supposed to be to walk. So we didn't use the platforms, but, I mean, that's what the space is. That's why I, 10 people is is ideal. For, it is for, I mean, but.
And what was it, mechanical design? It wasn't for that.
No, what was it?
I believe that from everything I remember when we built the elementary, that was put on as an auxiliary locker room. Is, is the original idea, that's why it was put there. We had the two entrances from both ends and they would eventually talked about putting a wall in between there, either that or storage, but I believe that's what that was there for was.
And you can still make a locker.
Yeah, and, and that's been our discussions too, with everything we're adding, well, then how does that affect the current building we have? And what do we put in there? And how can we move that to here and this to there and all of those things, so.
I think the, the, the third thing is funding. Could we afford it? Could you afford it? How do we pay for something like that? So had Craig do a little research and talk to a few people, so I let him share just a little bit about what he came up with, so give you that information.
Yeah, um, so I reached that there's a couple of schools that are building currently or trying to that I talked to, and one of the things they, you know, they're doing is capital lease certificates we've never had, which is basically a bond issue. It's like a bond issue. But, um, it's not to that length of term or, and it's also limited in how much you can generate. And so capital lease certificates, it's still a bond, it still has the callable where you've got to set a time limit of when they can be callable in order to, if you wanted to pay them off early, you can do that. But it's 3% of what you, what you can generate is 3% of your total valuation. Well, in 2021, our total valuation was $541 million and some, and change. So 3% of that would be $16 million. Now, if you do the 3%, it could be referred to a vote by somebody if they wanted to. So if you do elect to go up to that 3% amount, somebody, they have 20 days to take out a petition to bring it to a vote. Or you guys could say, let's do capital lease certificates, but we're gonna refer to a vote to start with. You have that right too. The reason why some people do capitalized certificates instead of a bond, a bond has to be voted on. It's gotta be passed by whatever percentage, 60, 40, right?
60.
Okay, or 60%, yeah, I have to. Capitalized certificates, if you borrowed less than 1 and 1/2% of what your valuation is, which for us would be $8 million and change, it can't, it's, there's no referring that to any vote. No one can come in and
Question your decision.
Decisions. So, you know, when you.
You talked about taxpayers.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep. You could still refer to a vote if you wanted to. You guys have that right too. But no one else could come in in 20 days and take out a petition and say, let's, we need this to a vote. But you would have to educate the taxpayers and, you know, $8 million? Would that cover it? Well, the Parker School is in a construction project right now. Freeman just had a, a bid opening on doing very similar to the exact same thing that we were talking about, adding a weight room on. Putting in a, a referee locker room slash little closet shower area and a couple other little things, a bathroom just for that entrance and so that people from their community can come in and use it.
Is a wrestling room, right?
Yeah, but they, but it was a new entrance as well.
Yep.
For them to allow outside people entrance into their facility so they could use their gyms, which they allowed to do over there. But this new entrance would help their security and cutting things off and things like that, locking things down a little bit better. So according to Parker, you know, they, they did capitalized certificates there in a three-phase thing. Their interest rate was around 3%. It was, right at 3% is what it says here on those. They did 5.2 million for theirs. The bid that came in over then, he was told approximately $200 per square foot. For, but they're doing classrooms. They're doing 16 classrooms in Parker. Now, that was their cost when they did it. They started it a year ago, a little different timeframe. Freeman's just opened their bids, theirs was about $225 per square foot. That was a pre-cast walls, which is cement. But it's pre-made and they just lock them together somehow.
Yep.
So that's what their deal was, but it was about $225 per square foot. So I did 120 by 120, at $225 per square foot. Now, I don't know if that's gymnasium space or, you know, if we did a steel structure type of field house thing is, that's the same as a pre-cast, I don't know.
So 225, Craig, was, what were they doing at Parker?
They were doing, they, he told me $200. Brick and mortar, 16 classroom.
Got it.
And they were told back a year or so ago when they did their bid opening, so they were, you know, they got a gym in the works in near future here because it's a three-phase project over there. They were told the gymnasium was about $180 square foot then.
They say it should be cheaper.
Yes, so maybe this Freeman deal was a little part of the guy, I talked to that guy today and he had, they couldn't find people that nobody bid on the electrical, nobody bid on the plumbing. So the general contractor just threw numbers in there because he didn't want to be short-changed. They're having a hard time finding contractors to bid it.
Wow.
On his deal, that's what he told me. So he was afraid, that's why his, theirs came in a little higher than what like, it was about $250,000 higher than what they thought, 150 to 250 than what they wanted, but. But anyway, the 225, if it was that, you know, who knows what the price can be in a year? I mean, this isn't something that's gonna happen tomorrow, so today, I'm just going by today's numbers. 120 by 120 at 225 is 3.2 million.
And that's just to build it? That's not putting anything in it?
Oh, I think that, well, what are you gonna, what would you put in?
Like, I mean, like supplies, like if you put up.
We have the wrestling mats.
Are you gonna buy new wrestling or weight room stuff, or was their intention to do something different?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Or, like, if you're gonna make a bigger space, are you expanding? I guess, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Some of our stuff would need to be updated, but it's gonna be, need to be updated right now too. Cause our treadmill and our elliptical that is in there is.
Shot, just goes shot.
The last time, I've, I've replaced the motor a couple of times, replaced the platform a couple of times. They said the next time you do it, you probably should just buy a new one.
But yeah, there's going to be certain, and I'm sure if you were to build it right, you'd want three treadmills and three bikes and if we're gonna include a baseball net that would drop down and.
I mean, you're inclu, you're just building it with that, right?
I don't know what the 225 includes, is that?
Right, does that include the basketball?
That includes flooring, lighting and all that stuff.
Just like to build.
But not a desk and not.
Right, yeah, so there'd be additional costs above.
Furnishings, yeah.
But one wouldn't have to take it to that nth degree too. Again, are, do you want brick and mortar or would you do a steel structure? The thing about steel right now, you know, just to getting Craig talking with Parker, um, and hearing through the grapevine, you can almost build brick and mortar for the same price as steel right now. I mean, it's not a huge advantage where in years past, people would always say, well, you put up a steel building and look down their nose upon you because you did that. It's not as good as our, you know, cement building all the way up. Well, you know, you're right. But now the expense factor, I mean, it's almost a push right now. But again, we're not talking, you know, something that hits in the immediacy.
I guess, one thing, if, with the, back to the capital lease certificates, there is a years max on how long you can take them out for. And it's 20 years, I did not say that. That's a little bit different. That's where a bond is, can be longer. So those are sometimes 30 to 40 years or something, but a 20-year max on a capital lease certificate. And then you can make them callable at any time and all that's in your agreement with the finance place that you go through. Like a DA Darty or, or.
So your debt to service there, when you sell those, you have to have a vendor out there who's going to invest in them. They buy them from an investment perspective. So if they're getting 3% on it, that's their gain on it, then you as a school district are gonna turn around, that's the interest. You're gonna have to pay on that, um, whatever that amount is, you know, that you take out or you sell. Then you, you have to pay the interest on that as well, so.
At least until they become callable.
Yep, in, in 20 years, 15 years, 10 years, I mean, you have the ability to set those where you want them. So how do you pay for that? Well, within your capital outlay budget, you just know that you have this payment. No different than a CUSA bond or a bond or, you know, a capital outlay certificate, you put it in your budget before you do anything else with it. We have a $150,000 capital outlay certificate we have to pay. I mean, that's just, that's the very first thing at the top, if you have no other debt. And then you can start doing the capital outlay things like we've addressed before, you know, to help build your budget, so. I, I guess, our whole point, we, we don't want to take a whole lot more time, but you asked us to, we could show you some ideas where we felt that it's possible to expand your physical footprint. The rationale is to the reasons why you would maybe want to think about doing that. And then the funding aspect of, of its plausibility. Can you do that within the amount without bonding? Yeah, I mean, I think you can. You have some capital outlay reserve dollars right now. I think you're sitting on.
1.1.
Million, right? A million dollars that's in your capital, really that's reserve funds, so. Yeah, I mean.
Almost 1.2.
There's, there's possibilities there for you. We are looking for.
With the second half of tax payments coming when most of your capital outlay expenditures for the year have already been expended.
You know, in the 45% flexibility law, Robin Peter to pay Paul, you know, because of some federal dollars, at least for this particular school, you're, the dollars that you're gonna recede in a capital outlay, I suspect, you're gonna put them in the bank because you really don't have the necessity right now to pay general fund, uh, dollars, you know, Robin Peter to pay Paul. Because you're, you're in that position right now because of some federal dollars, but. Yeah, I guess we wanted just to present it to you guys. If you want to comment, you guys can talk to each other about it, but, you know, if it's something you guys aren't even interested in, so be it, then we'll shut up, we'll be quiet, we won't bring it back to you, you know, until you tell us to.
One last, just, Parker gave me their, you know, at 5.2 million at 3% for their 20 years, it's a $200,000, 210, kind of builds a little bit the principal, you know, but to start with, it was 210 and about, it's about 144, that's, 354 was the payment for the first year. And that's on 5.2 million. Just to give you an idea of what, how much of a capital outlay burden it would be on a yearly basis.
And the interest is in there.
Yeah, that, that's including the interest, that's what I'm saying. That's the principal payment and the interest payment based on his amortization schedule that he gave me right here.
And you said it was about 3.1?
Well, I'm just going, you know, we showed 100, I just did 120 by 120, took that times to get the square feet and then took that times the $225 is 3.24 million.
My gut tells me if he does say you did something 18 months from now, would you have to pay that? I mean, could you build that facility for 3.2 million or a facility? Is that enough? Is that too much? I mean, the number I had in my head for an expansion and probably, you know, at the time I thought steel was probably cheaper than brick and mortar, but, I mean, two was sitting in my mind. You know, building something for two. But there again, you know, an architect's, uh, I guess the, the fourth thing would be, you know, process. How would we do that? My proposal to you guys is I have an RFP, that's a request for proposal for architecture services. We craft it, describe what we want to build, we put it out there for, on the exchange. People put in their submissions, you guys review those things that the people put in, those vendors put in, you pick two or three of them, you bring them in for a private interview and a executive session and we let them give you your spiel and then you say, okay, we like you guys, we want to go with you. Then you enter into a contract with them for the development of the type of, uh, project that you're looking for. And certainly there, there costs, there's a cost factor to that as well. You think, well, how much? Well, you just have Ace sitting here, which we're gonna get to here, you know what they charged you to develop your HVAC project and your electrical. So that in of itself. So that in of itself, you know, was the better part of seventy?
Yeah, but the number six on my head when we did the project out there was like six percent?
Most of them operate on a percentage of the total cost.
It was like five or six, wasn't it?
When, for Pitts, when they did that, the engineering portion of that. I wanna say.
Instead of, let's just pick one. I mean, I would propose you guys, let's vet a couple of these.
It wouldn't cost anything to do the vetting part. You don't, until you enter the contract, you start paying that.
Yeah, they want to come, they'll, they'll, you know, I don't know, for lack of a better term, wine and dine you and smoosh you and tell you how great they are. And then you have the determination, okay, it's you. And then once you get them on board, sign the dotted line, then you'll, you can enter into negotiations. And that's actually in the RFP that I got as to how much their services are gonna cost to help you develop that.
Six percent of the HVAC projects, about seventy-five thousand. That's about what they're supposed to earn us.
Heard enough. You guys, if there is any coloration.
Well, I like new things, so that sounds like fun, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
I, I mean, I think our wrestling room does invade some more space. I mean, I think that I think it's something we should at least explore, you know, cause I mean, we're talking about, I mean, we can move some weight equipment in there. And, I mean, just in the grand scheme of things, maybe there's a way we could just have, you know, that area and a few other areas of the school accessible to the public. I mean, maybe, maybe that's not possible. I don't know. But until we get some, an architect involved and, or at least, at least explore the opportunity of it. And I think that, um, you know, I think it's a good, I think it's a step in the right direction, me personally. And I mean, the numbers, from what I've heard and Craig's talked about, I think the numbers jive. I mean, cause what'd you say, half was eight million?
Yeah.
That we could go up to? I mean, yeah, I don't know. I, I think the numbers jive. What do you guys think?
Seems like a, a lot of money, but I think we're getting to the point where it's almost more of a necessity than even a want. You know, I mean, we're talking about practices at six AM and eight o'clock at night and a wrestling room, that's insufficient and I don't know. John?
So how does our enrollment look for the next five or ten years?
Great question. Um, I would say it's on the uptick. Looking at our begin, our preschool and our beginner garden. And our, we're a solid two-section school, um, in K through three. There's one, I think, second grade classes may be a little bit short, um, as far as the total, the total numbers, I think. So. And I think from what you guys, from what I've seen here, you always, you got a few outliers here. Classes that come through the system for whatever reason tend to be anomaly, you know. You're a solid anywhere from thirty-eight to forty-two kid class, you know, which makes decent numbers, you know, and then you'll have that class that's twenty-five.
Twenty-five to thirty, that stinks.
That, that makes it a little bit tough when that happens. But we have a beginner garden class that's twenty-three, I think. Um, we have two kindergarten classes that are, I think, twenty-three to twenty-
Kindergarten's twenty each.
What are they, Mr. Fisher?
Yep. The kindergartens, we're at forty. So we're twenty and twenty.
Twenty and twenty. And then we have a preschool.
Yep. By next year, we'll have probably that same thing, cause preschool's at thirty-seven and beginner garden's at twenty-two. So we're gonna have to really work hard to balance all of that, honestly.
Cause some of them will move forward without, right? So you kind of always have some overlap between the two that, yeah.
I found, I found the Google sheet, but I just, my Google skills aren't as good as yours, so I finally got that.
I mean, you're not growing by ten a class, but there's consistent numbers there.
Kindergarten's forty, thirty-seven.
So Craig, when, Mr. McKinnon, when you did the, uh, square footage, that's just for a gym, right?
Well, a hundred by twen-, a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty, one is, that's bigger than a gym because the gym on, you know, the MPR right there. Now granted, the MPR is about ten feet too short.
Right.
Or width-wise, because of bleachers ability.
That's what you're asking, John?
Well, what I'm saying is-
What does a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty give us?
Yeah, what does that give us? I mean, does that give us the weight room, the, um, does that give us all the three things that we're looking at?
Yeah. I could see easily for Mr. Norton.
The Clark one.
You-
That Clark one was a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty, wasn't it?
Yeah, but you, you had did something on that footprint of what it got you. You could fit something inside of something inside of something.
Yeah.
So a wrestling mat's forty-two feet by forty-two feet. So I went and I looked at the spot kind of next to my office up there in that admin parking lot, or whatever parking lot that is, somewhere in there. And I walked it off from basically where that extension comes out all to where the MPR comes out.
Right there.
Again, just rough estimate, and I think that was a little over a hundred feet. And I had it figured you could put two wrestling mats in there, cause that's eighty feet. Um, and then that would leave you another forty feet by forty feet section. So basically the size of the wrestling room that you could split up into two locker rooms type idea. And then you would also have another forty-foot section that you could put as a whole weight room or workout facility, all in that amount of space. Some of it might've been cramped, might not have been, when you start putting hallways and that kind of stuff in. But a hundred by, a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty, that's bigger than the armory. We could probably put eight wrestling mats in that. Well,
Without the bleachers.
Forty, forty, forty. You could get six pretty easy in there.
Okay.
And, uh-
Clark has a space that's a hundred, I believe a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty when we measured. And that thing was two basketball courts like this with a two-lane track around it. And it was a steel structure. It was a community facility. One of them sides they used it for a basketball court. The other size of the basketball court was used half as a weight room, half as the wrestling slash. Now, I, that, I know that's just there. I'm-
And, you know-
Overkill on the weight.
I think we even looked at-
A hundred and twenty, I mean, that half.
If you had two mats down for wrestling, which would be great during wrestling season, if you filled, filled one of those up and just had one mat down all the time, the other one, then you could have a batting cage in or something along those lines. So people could use it at that time that you'd drop from the ceiling. Or those sort of things. So you, that's the nice thing about an open space, as long as you plan it that way. You know, but then you gotta worry about what kind of flooring. Are you gonna put a basketball flooring in with wood? Are you gonna put linoleum or just have straight concrete and put things over the top? But that's all the-
Architectural stuff.
Yeah. Where a hundred by twenty, a hundred and twenty is big.
So what have we done? Have we looked at, Mr. McKinnon or Craig, have we looked at levy? For the raising the money, the tax, what, what that would do?
Well, and that's, no, we haven't, because that's why I got this amortization scheduled to figure out, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar payment. You're gonna lose a hundred and thirty-two in about three years. Each year, you know, that we're doing right now at our current levy amount. How much would you have to raise it? I don't know. That's the stadium. The CUSAB bonds, right now, the CUSAB bonds, we have paid five hundred and twenty-eight thousand of the nine twenty-four.
When will that be paid off?
Two and a half, one thirty-two, six.
So-
Probably three and a half.
Keep in mind, in capital outlay, while there's a levy, that's not how you request the dollars anymore.
You request it by dollar.
You re, you request a specific dollar amount instead of two mils, three mils, two point five mils like it used to. There's a formula in there that you do the math based on your ADM, that tells you how much you can generate in capital outlay. And as of right now, you are-
We're about one point five five, dollar fifty-five.
And you can go up to three.
If you were to go to the old school dollar amount, it's a dollar, around a dollar fifty to fifty-five, somewhere around that range.
Just do the math and that's what you could ask for, cause you have the ability to do that, but you're probably about half of what you're asking for right now is half of what you could ask for. Again, not proposing to raise taxes. Nobody wants to do that. And I don't think that's a prudent thing to do. Can you get it done within what you're asking for right now, based on selling certificates, using some reserve dollars? I think that's where if we, we get serious about it and we bring an architect, you know, to give us some ideas, get an idea of what kind of dollars we're talking about, I, I think there's an opportunity to, you know, get the dollars, whether it's through certificates and your, um, you know, what you have in reserves. In order to get you to that point over time, it's not writing one big check and the immediacy of it, but I think you can, you can do that. But there's always that notion of bonding too, you know, and what does that mean? Well, when you bond, you go out for a bond, you know, you're asking for a certain amount of dollars. Again, the difference, that's coming out of general fund. And that's a little bit different tax structure as far as what your levy is and what you're asking for and how it impacts in order to public versus what capital outlay is. And they have the ability to say, no, any bond issue, public automatically is gonna give you permission, yea or nay, because it has to. This opportunity, and I'm not saying you exclude them, but if you guys see it within, it's your best interest or you're acting on behalf of the school district and there's some common sense approach to that and you're, you're not building the Taj Mahal. You know, if you're doing it at the, the one point five percent, then they have, the school doesn't, or the, a community doesn't have an opportunity to refer it. Go out and get petitions on the money that you're generating. You guys have the ability to do that on your own accord. Again, I'm not advocating that you do that, but that, that is an opportunity.
When will that be paid off?
I did not look that schedule up.
Did you say three years?
I do have it, so I know where it's at.
Or were you spitballing? Craig?
I think it's, it's three or three and a half.
This is, this is Clark. This is the facility that Craig's been in and that he's seen. That is a steel structure.
Yeah. Attached to the school, the back half. And one thing we thought about is maybe we need to go tour some places. So it's one twenty-five by one twenty-one.
Hundred, hundred and five, somewhere in there.
That thing has two, now are they, they're probably maybe like the MPR-sized courts that are just a tad bit smaller than the- But that was, that's two side courts with the two-lane track around it is what that is right there, that building.
Inside of there.
Inside of that.
Courts run, run this way.
I don't remember which way they run, but there's two full-size court areas. Only one of them is an actual basketball court. The other side, it has the curtains down the middle, so there's no walls. They have those retractable curtains that they could, can go down the, half of the basketball, this size basketball. Then they got another curtain that divides that in two, weight room in this side, gymnastics floor, slash wrestling mats. All in one, I mean, they roll over the top of each other. That's, I'm saying, I'm not advocating for them, but I'm just saying that's the size.
I would say you're probably right, man. They're going this way. It's a hundred, it's a hundred foot wide. So that would get you, you know, too bad.
Okay, then. Here's this. CUSAB bonds, so the end of, on September ninth of twenty-four is the last payment. Or December ninth, not September, I'm sorry, December ninth of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Not saying they're not. I don't know if the CUSAB bonds are available anymore.
Yeah, depending on the programming, if they, we'd have to do some research and if that's something right now that the federal government is offering. The thing about CUSAB bonds, there are certain restrictions and Craig and I talked about what was built with, out there. Because that was an existing facility, improvements on the facility, even though potential, not necessarily bricks and mortar, I think you got under the radar on that, it worked. But to actually build a brand-new and addition physical footprint, brick and mortar with CUSAB bonds, I'm almost positive that does not, would not qualify under that particular program. There's another, not CUSAB, but I, I can't think of the name of, there's another program where you can do some of that. That's not necessarily a bond, so to speak, but it's been a long time. I'd have to go do some research.
South Dakota Hefa.
On that too. I don't recall. I don't-
Cause that's what the Parker one is, is the South Dakota Hefa, which is a credit enhancement program. South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority.
That may be something even a new concept since my experience with that, so. But we don't, you guys don't have to make any decision. I guess we brought it to you tonight. Now you know some more. You know, maybe you want to send, let it marinate. And if it's something we want to put on a discussion item for February or March or whatever, we don't need direction, I guess. We just wanted you, we, we dropped the bomb on you a month ago and we, we kind of give you some more information to think about and process a little bit. And if we're done with the process, the conversation tonight, that's all well and good too. I guess the question is, is let us think about it and bring it back or don't bring it back, cause I know I'm not interested. Maybe that's unfair too, so.
I would be interested in hearing more, but that's just me.
I would, I would say at least, you know, maybe let it wait a month and go from there and then we can-
You might get some feedback, you might not.
Right. There's no art in, you know, seeing what architects' ideas come up with and go from there, I guess.
Good.
Do the, appreciate it.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, get where we're at, then you're gonna be talking to some architects or?
I might reach out to a couple people, guys, and then all that are in the game.
I mean, it's nothing, you're saying it's, it's there on the table. Would it make sense to bring somebody here next month and just talk about what we're discussing here? Get some ideas. They, they ought to know what costs are.
Yeah.
Right? So then it would maybe clarify little things for us, for me, where the dollar numbers at.
Is that, I mean, I assume that kind of would be what, um, what did you call it?
Yeah, so a request for proposal. So if you want to go to the point of we get an RFP and putting it out there and then going through that process. Or, you know, the, the slippery slope here is if you just reach out to a neighbor who maybe happens to be in the field and, hey, could you come talk to us a little bit? Or you, then you're like, yeah, geez.
And then you're a little obdied almost.
Kind of feel bad a little bit about maybe not using that company then. Yeah, they were generous enough to come talk to you and give you some feedback and some information and free gratis, yeah, no problem.
So I assume when they come with those ideas, they would have some rough ideas of price or that would just be an idea?
Yeah, so that process, if you want them to, if you're gonna go through an RFP and you, you interview a couple firms and you say, hey, we like you, it'd be tough for them to bring it at that point in time because realistically, they're not even a hundred percent sure, other than just what you put in the little synopsis as to what you're looking for. You know, but there'd be a lot of, I think, unanswered questions at that time, because you can't fit it all in, uh, what I would call the narrative that you put out when you advertise that request for proposal. It'd be tough to be, uh, specific, that they're gonna have the ability to even think about, come to numbers. Now, could they give you general numbers of what constructions costing at that point in time? Absolutely. I mean, they, they're gonna have that.
And when they do their spiel, they're probably giving these guys ideas of other projects that they have done at other places, not necessarily your project that you're doing, correct?
Yep.
And this doesn't cost us any money to do this?
Um, not to do an RFP. They'll come in and they'll, they'll, they'll want your business. And then that's free gratis. Then it's decision, you know what? We don't like anybody. You don't owe them anything.
Well, I feel like that's fine.
That was their top.
Out anything if we-
I think that would give us more information.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, I don't know, because the timeline's in it, it's certainly something I think we can get done here in a couple of months if we bought out an RFP. I'm working, I kind of got the information from a colleague of mine who's now retired, who's, uh, works for an architect. But good guy with no expectations, with some paperwork and, you know, to reach out to something like that. It goes to the exchange, so you get people interested in it, you know, so we can see where we at. I don't think it's gonna happen in a month's time, but maybe in a couple of months, we can get somebody in here answer to the RFP and they send the paperwork in and you pick a couple you want to talk to, so.
Okay. So you'll move forward with that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, we will move to D. Uh, HVAC project update. The board will review the specs and timelines for the bid process designed by Associated Consulting Engineering Incorporated.
So what I really want to show you this, I just got this today. So this is more of your footprint. So this is more of your footprint. If you can see your school down here, this is your footprint. This is the high school end, this is kind of the kitchen area, this is, would be over here, and then this is your elementary. This is just your light. That doesn't really tell you a lot other than just the number of fixtures that are going into, that they're going to replace the LED aspect of things. Two by two grids. Question, Craig?
No, I'm sorry. I said it's a lot of lights.
Yeah, no, it's a lot. So this is probably the more interesting one. I'm not going to blow that up, but this is the HVAC project. All these things are indicative. So here's the, that footprint in the high school end. So these are all your univentilators within the building or in those rooms. So they got that covered. The next one, if you look at the shaded area is here. You have a couple rooftop, uh, cause this is your kitchen, things that they got. And like I said, I did the walkthrough with those guys a week ago. Um, we were probably here for hour and a half, 90 minutes just to make sure. This is your, um, multipurpose space hallway, things, some locker rooms and stuff. It's just again, that's, this is the plumbing and heating side of it. Here is your elementary end and your rooms, would be like the main office here, and then these are classrooms, so. And then it goes into, these are the actual ventilation and AC. So all you see now, you've got all these outside units here. So essentially the same thing, there, everything's there. I will go back up here if I can get it to you here. I wonder if I can blow this up, learn with me here. Might be tough to read. Okay, so you see the condensing unit schedule versus the heat pump schedule and you see the alternate, remember we asked him to do that. So you're going to get a different, couple different pricings on that. And then the rest of it, you know, univentilator, those are the cabinets in the classrooms and then it's got some cooling and heating part. I will tell you this, he looked at from the high school end, what's in across from Mr. Norton's office, you go down in the room down there, I don't know if you've ever been in there, there's a boiler in there. We have to take that from one stage to two stage. So there's gonna have to be two, just like you did over here in the elementary when lightning struck. There was two replaced them, but, so that whole system on that end is going to have to be a retrofit and it's in the bid to put, take that old Kloni, Swanee Kloni is the product, the branding, and go from a one-stage boiler to two-stage. He said they can't, it won't work with what it's, from an efficiencies perspective. But that's, again, it's in the bid. So I, I feel comfortable that he had everything in there. The one thing that he was going to get me and he didn't get me is the gym, uh, the ventilation. And that was on our own anyway. But I told him what we had for a quote potentially to take that back down to galvanize, the blue ductwork that's in there, and I gave him that number between 22 and 25. And he's like, well, I'm almost positive I can get you two socks for way less than that. So, but he was going to get me a price and he didn't do that, sorry. And I know he's out of, he's somewhere, I don't know where he's at, I don't even know if he's in country, but he's not here, so.
Thinking out about you just a little bit, if we would look at doing an expansion, are, is our present heating systems adequate to do that addition or would we have to add another boiler? I'm just asking.
Yeah, great question. And I can't answer that with, for you, Mr. Pearl, but I think that's where that potential architect comes in and looks at the established, depending where you connect it, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, for sure.
Is there any reason to ask these folks about that before we?
Um.
I mean, this is already.
Well, so here's the, I'll, I'll answer that in an indirect way because in the shop area, Mr. Schell and Fuller know this because he's been in there over the welding thing. What we have right now, there, there's nothing essentially. You got two charcoal filters in there that really don't do anything. So I said, hey, we went over there and looked at it. I said, what do you, can they, can we put this in there? And he's like, they're muddying the waters because it's really not embedded within that, this particular project that he's looking at. He said, if you really want to do that, he said, I suggest, you know, go with a private contractor, get them in here, get some pricing for it, do it on your own if it's that important to you to increase your ventilation so you can use your welders. So he just didn't want to intermix with that during what he's, to the point where he's at right now.
Sure.
So, um, the thing about the rest of this is just the timeline for you. And if you look at that document I put in there, I gave you an example of what a potential bid's going to look like. And so you know, that bid actually goes in the Parkston advance, so Mr. Scott, potentially something that's coming your way. That's the only place it goes. Then they send it out to the exchange. So they'll put it out on the exchange, but the only required advertisement you need to do is in your own public paper. So it's not like it's going out to all the different media outlets, but other than their exchange, he said, trust me, there'll, there'll be people bidding on it. But anyway, if you can see there, today's January 10th, dates and specs on our specs and drawings, 19th to the 26th, advertisement in the paper, that's where that information's going to go. And you're like, what goes in there? Well, I gave you that little scenario on the page behind it. That's what it potentially would look like. It was waiver lease. So it would look something similar. And then you have a pre-bid meeting at school. We do not need board present for that, you're more than welcome, but we don't need to advertise for a board meeting because they're, you're all here. That pre-bid meeting at school walkthrough, that's where the vendors come in and take a peek. And then February 10th, after they've done that, February 10th, you have an actual bid letting. Again, that doesn't necessarily have to be a board meeting, it certainly can if you would like it to, if you would all like to be present. You have a committee where there's a couple of you that are on the bid letting committee. I don't recall who that is off the top of my head. But then we'd probably do that in the admin area. We come in, everybody's got their stuff, we open them up and you just stack them, you can announce that stuff there. And then February 14th, four days later, when you have your February board meeting, knowing that you have that information and you're going to make a decision if you like it or you don't like it. And you always have right of refusal, reject any and all bids. So that's your timeline that you're looking at for this HVAC project. Questions?
Will ACE give us recommendations up or down as far as quality of contractors on some of it?
Uh, I, yeah, I don't know that that's going to be, that'd be probably more of a.
Yeah.
One of those, I think.
That's fine.
Yeah. But certainly, I think that's part of their responsibility is to advise you, like, you know, but they've got to understand they can't, they can't bite the hand that feeds them either too. And you don't know that they're in the practice of, not necessarily they're throwing anybody under the bus, but you, you kind of have some private conversations. And me, me personally, I mean, I've been in the game long enough. I mean, I kind of know some vendors too. I'm not so sure that's, that's the one we want, you know, just based on talking to guys in my chairs and people at the bed through past experiences and like, that didn't go well or, yeah, if you can avoid that, I probably would type of deal. So I could certainly help with that notion as well.
So this February 30th, does the whole board need to be there?
No.
That's just the people in the committee?
Yep. And actually not even the people in the committee, if you don't have to, you can, you're welcome, anybody's welcome, as long as we don't have more than three of you. So we don't have a quorum. You know, but that's when the vendors are going to come in and do a walkthrough. And the ACE will be here, answer any questions they have, show them the facility so those people can go back then and put a bit, a spec together.
Okay.
So, and then February 10th, when you open up that bid letting, again, doesn't, can advertise if you all five want to be there. You know, we're looking at like a 3:30 type of afternoon when, when you're opening that type of stuff though, is what he proposed.
When we did that other one, the track project, I don't think either one of them were board meetings.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know.
You can, but you don't have to. And that's what I asked and the questions that followed in there is, do we have to? You certainly can, but it's not a necessity.
Okay.
Because you do have a committee. You have two people there that if they want to be present, you're not doing anything, you're not taking any action on it anyway, February 10th. You're just, oh, it's nice to know what the price came in at, but I can certainly relay that information too.
Okay. So during this walkthrough, you can ask questions and things, they'll explain everything or is it more just for?
They ask questions.
It's for the bid, the people making the bid to? Okay, I got you. It's just for us to kind of see the process or what?
It'll be a beady force, it'll be a moose, it'll be whoever wants to, to think that they're going to bid it.
With ACE.
And ACE will be here, they'll answer those questions as to what's going on with it. So we don't even really do anything on those.
Okay.
I'll be there. I mean, I'll walk with them. I mean, cause that's, I, I want to know. I mean, I want to get a feel for who's there, so.
All right. Anything else you need from us on that or just an update?
No, yeah, that's where you're at. Just that we're close. I mean, a, a month from now, you'll be pulling the trigger, so.
Okay. All right, we will move to action items. A is a safe return to school plan. The board will consider changes to the current isolation and close contact mitigation strategies due to the current CDC recommendations to change timelines for positive and close contact situations.
So I gave you this document just tonight and then the other pack, part you had in your packet, I outlined, if you had not heard, it's essentially, which seems ironic, right? Seems like everything's kind of taken off right now and they want to reduce, you know, so. We've been questioned a couple of times on whether we're going to follow CDC guidance on that. Nobody's really been upset with us, but we've told a few people, say, listen, you know, we don't have that authority. Right now, our protocol is if you are a positive case, you're not coming back until day 11, whenever that happens to be. So, you know, if you look at the document, one I just gave you tonight, I think it does a better job of outlining that, positive COVID-19 and you do not have symptoms, it's recommendation, isolate for five, you still, when you come back, you're in a mask for the totality of 10. Keep in mind, there's always a two-day weekend in there. If they develop symptoms or after testing positive, then they reset. That five-day isolation period would have to start over. And that's the symptom or, or not have symptoms, and then the one below that is if you've had symptoms, still isolate for five days. Zero day is the first day, you don't count that. So technically in a week's time, you're getting about to day eight, you know, because you can't count the first, when you got the, uh.
Positive test?
Yeah, you know, so you have to count zero a day on that from that particular day. And then again, bring in people back after five days of isolation, but they mandatory mask for the rest of whatever that is, counting the weekend or how many school days that is. And that's different, whereas right now you just say 10 days you're out. Can't come back, you're home for 10 days.
So you isolate for five and wear a mask for five essentially?
Essentially. And no testing out of it once you've been positive. The five days is the five days, that's solid in the mask, no argument about it. You know, because you do have your close contact status where you're allowing the serial testing in days one through seven, you know, so. I think that's probably the biggest change. The rest of that is just kind of some information that kind of it's repetitive if you wanted to read up on it so you knew exactly what department or excuse me, CDC was recommending with that information, so.
I have a question.
Yes, Lindsay, you probably know more than I do.
So if, if we allow that, which I'm okay with that as long as people actually abide by wearing the mask, and we need to consider preschool kids, you know, and can they keep the mask on appropriately, so on and so forth. But then if we allow those kids to come back, the rest of the kids will not be considered close contacts at what point? I mean, like if they come back on day five and they're wearing a mask, we would not consider the rest of the kids. Let's say they tested positive on Sunday, so nobody was considered a close contact prior. They come back on day five in a mask, we're not going to tell the rest of the kids they're a close contact, correct?
Yeah, because they, they.
Cause they're in a mask and.
They've all, uh, they've done due diligence, they're outside of that spectrum of expectation timeways where just because they came back in that, even after day five, that kid's in a mask, the rest of them are not considered to be close contacts at that stage of game.
Just so that's clear.
Now, if he's in school.
Right.
And he's got a mask on and the rest of them are not, and then he tests positive because he, something happened. Okay, my take on that is now the rest of them, because again, back to our policy right now, the nature of your elementary classroom, even though he has a mask on, okay? That does not excuse you now and it does not get you out of it. Even when you have one and I have one, we're playing together, six foot goes to three foot, but ultimately it does not excuse you from being that close contact. Because a cumulative 15 minutes over a seven-hour day, you and I playing together is still going to meet that stipulation. So in that sense, yes, now we got little guys for sure that are, you know what, sorry, you are designated as a close contact because of what took place. I, we, we're doing okay. Our numbers right now, just so you know, we had two over the weekend, we diagnosed four today in school, and we had 54 close contacts, K through 12. So we're not near where we were when we came back from the state volleyball tournament, but the, the thing is evident flaw. I mean, I suspect we're going to have a couple more tomorrow. Now, no one class is getting inundated at one time. I got three sixth graders and we have three sixth graders, but it was last week and then one at the end of the week and then another one this week. So it's not like they're all, and two of them, I'm pretty sure had sick parents at home if I recall, or at least one of them did.
Lucky for sure.
So, yeah, I don't know.
Why don't you get some 14 kids back to school if we can, you know?
I agree. My biggest concern is them actually wearing it. Cause I've seen people, I'm just, like it is what it is. I don't even, like I don't want to police it, but I've seen kids at activities who are supposed to be masked because they were close contact, the entire game they had it down here. And I'm not going to, I don't really care, whatever, I'm not, it is what it is, don't, I don't want to hear it. But the thing is, is that if these younger kids are going to come back to school, I don't want the teacher the entire day have to be saying, put your mask on, put your mask on, put your mask on. That feels really bad too. So I guess I, that was my only concern with the younger kids. And I don't know where you cut that off. And even with older kids, and I'm sure there are times they don't follow the rules either, so. I don't know, you know, like, I think for the most part, kids are following the rules. It's, I'm not picking on anyone, I'm just saying, if that's.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a good point.
You know, I mean, the recommendation is five days, but also, you know, if a student comes back coughing, coughing, coughing and, you know, I mean, we have to be a little wise.
Well, and here's what I don't like about it, because I talked to Melissa today. Essentially, it's going to take Mr. Fisher, Mr. Norton, myself, Melissa. So I did my five days. I'm, I'm done, I'm symptom, I feel good, I feel fine. Do you? And then they come in and then it's like, this is the third time I've heard you hacking like a dog. You know what? I think you should go home. And then you take this phone call, you want to come get Johnny for what? Cause he's coughing. No, he's done his due diligence and so now who's in the crosshairs?
Well, that's, that was another thing I thought about was this kind of, it doesn't really, like you have to still use your common sense if you're, if you, if you have anything, even if you're outside of that timeframe, if you're still not feeling well or you're still having symptoms, or you still have a fever, or you still whatever, you don't come back.
Exactly.
And I think that this kind of sets that up to be questionable. I don't know.
I, and for me, I think that, I mean, if my kids were, you know, positive COVID and they were feeling good, I think some of it's going to be left in the parent's hands. You know, I mean, if your kid feels good, your kid feels good. And if they're symptom-free and they feel good, hey, turn us on and back.
But, but they have to wear a mask though?
Well, of course, don't, yes, yes. But I'm just saying, you know, if.
And that makes sense, you know?
After, after day five, hey, if my kid feels good, I, I mean.
I know, but I think there are circumstances where the kids don't feel good, and they see that it's day five, and they just, I want to send you back, because I don't want to deal with it anymore. And they send their, people do it all the time. They send their kids to school sick, so.
I would see Mr. Norton, Mr. Fisher, to that concern. While it is a concern, it's been pretty good, honestly, as far as.
I was just going to say, I had one parent say, because obviously, since CDC's come out, they've heard that, they were questioning things, but I had one parent say, my kid still kind of has a little bit of a headache. This is day eight. I'm considering this day one. So they aren't coming back until I know for a few days that they've been completely symptom-free.
Well, that's good.
That being said, I know I've had parents go, well, after day five, I'm sending them back, because that's what the nurse told me they could do after, on the CDC. You know, no thought at all of, well, they had a fever the day before, but most, I think, understand that if they've got a fever, and I have heard that, too, well, they had a fever here, so I'm going to wait that, if they can come back day five, I'm going to wait till day seven. So again, the majority, I think, would understand, or would kind of look at it, but I'm not going to say all of them. And then when you get to junior high, upper elementary, where they can kind of stay home by themselves, eh, let's just get them to school. At least then, we know they're being watched. You know, and I think that's the concern, too. Or if I've got a bunch of lower elementary, well, I can't skip work any longer. I got to get them somewhere. And those are the ones I think, you know, high school kids will be happy to say, no, I don't feel good. I'm not coming.
Because they can't have their masks on then around other kids.
Yeah, so in this particular situation, then, you know, when these kids, if you decide to bring these kids back in after D5, we allow that opportunity, that's something we would have to address. That they can't be sitting there eating in the masses, you know, because that mask has to be on. I'm not afraid to, and it's not, I don't see it as a huge fight. Melissa, she didn't think that it would be a huge obstacle. I was surprised at the number of people who were, who have been very accommodating and saying, you know, my kid is fine. Quit. Quit calling me. There have always been. Yep, no problem.
Yeah, that's what I would say, too, from my experience in the elementary. Anybody that's testing and comes down with COVID, the parents are like, actually, I'm going to test them before they come back again. I mean, I haven't had any that are angry and want to, they understand a positive COVID test, there's been no fight in that. You know, it would be more of people that don't want to get them tested, that send them to school. But anybody that has had a positive test, I haven't had any issues with parents in that. And I think, I think that they would be really responsible. The parents I've dealt with so far have been all very, I think, handled things really well.
And what we could do is, I can craft this very, I want to say, very succinctly, and we could push that out through infinite campus, so everybody gets the text message as potential changes to this, so they're well aware and define it as to what the expectation is going to be. So we're not, we don't get in the crosshairs of somebody. And it's not that we're crosshairs from them being facetious, or sarcastic, or mean-spirited. It's more of lack of understanding, and that, once we give that clarification. And several of the phone calls, it's like, oh, okay. You know, the ones that happened early on, it's, well, CDC says, and Mr. Norton and Mr. Fisher have been, yeah, we understand that, but we have not changed our policy. Our policy still says this, and they've all said, oh, okay, they've been fine with that.
Yeah, completely.
And keeping kids at the 10-day bay, you know.
The other question I would have, if you do change, how does that affect sports? If they come back after day five with a mask, and they participate in athletics with a mask on, or do you just say, no, as long as you're COVID-positive for 10 days, you're done?
Do they still have to have a provider visit before competing?
Yep.
And what's the timeframe before you have to have that done? Like, how far into COVID diagnosis can you have that done?
It's upon returning to school.
Yeah. So at daytime?
Before they can participate in the activity, they must have a clearance by a doctor, physician of some sort, that clears them. It doesn't say it has to be on day one or day 10. But before they participate, and I'm sure any doctor would tell you, I'm not doing that till they're.
There's really no guidance on a timeframe on that, just having lived that experience with my daughter. You know, there wasn't anything that was done. We did ahead of time. We made the appointment and went through the questionnaire and signed off all well and good. You know, so depending on the severity of the illness, that's what it actually says in the Activity Association Protocol. Depends on the extent at which you need to be vetted by a provider. Some of it can be just through a phone call. I mean, it says right that on the form. That's really up to the provider, which you work with, as far as their expectation, so.
Is this our policy, or the?
That's South Dakota High School Activity Association, yep.
So do they have any guidance on this?
No, no, they're washing their hands.
To me, it seems kind of crazy to bring somebody back in a mask and them breathing like that around a bunch of other people during activity and still being positive within that. I don't know. That feels crazy to me, but I don't know.
The, what I've read, the rationale as to why they've changed it is because the infectionness, correct me if I'm wrong, Lindsay, but I read this somewhere. The infectionness of the Omicron variant is, you're going to know within days one to two.
Correct.
I mean, it's hammering people like right now. That's how infectious that thing is. So if you haven't got it, I'm exposed to you, and three days later, I haven't got it, then a very good chance that I'm not, because it's going to happen in that one to two days immediately.
Yeah, but you don't want to build a policy around a variant.
No.
You don't know what the next one's going to be like, and then that doesn't make sense to me. But I just, I don't know. I don't know.
I totally agree with getting kids back in school. A lot of these times, just kids are asymptomatic and sitting at home, you know? And that's silly. The sports is another.
Yeah, Mr. Norton brings up a great point. I mean, are you going to let those people play after day five? Or are you going to let them play in a mask? Or are you going to say, you know what?
Well, they'd have to play in a mask.
Athletically, yeah, right. But athletically, you know what? You're done for 10, period. And that's not differentiated from what you already have in policy, but it doesn't necessarily go in and coincide with what CDC is recommending. Now, they're just talking about isolation and quarantine. They're not talking about anything athletically. And Activity Association is no help.
But most providers, I would say, would be pretty hesitant, I'd say, before day 10 to say, sure, go ahead, do whatever you want, especially if they have any symptoms. I would, I don't know.
The only other addition, and I know Mr. Bruning's kind of stuck getting the crosshairs on this whole deal, but if they were to come back in a mask after five days, they could at least attend practice. You aren't practicing, but you can be there to at least watch and learn. But you aren't running up and down the floor. Could be one way of making it work, too.
You're not doing drill work. You're not facing.
You know, we're going to keep you separated a little bit from the group instead of being in the group. And I don't know if that's right either. Maybe it's just, if you're coming to school, you're going home. But then you're also going to get, well, if they can come to school, why can't they?
Yeah, I mean, they can come to practice. They can come to school.
It's an ever-ending cycle of.
Not competing is, I mean, they're not breathing hard, and I mean, wearing a mask and just walking down the hall is different than running up and down the gym wearing a mask. So I just, I don't know. I don't really care if they come to practice and not compete.
And you go to the right school, and they could care less if you're positive or not. Just show up when you feel like it, and hopefully, we don't talk about it anymore.
Well, that's happening. I just let you know.
We don't want to know if you're positive. We don't want to know anything, so.
Huh.
Yeah.
That's great. Huh, well.
So to me, back to, you know, what you want to do, because this is an action item.
Do we want to pick an age group first?
Change your protocol.
To try it and see how it goes?
I don't know. I think we, it's a, I really, I mean, if we're going to do it, I think we do it.
Even the littlest ones?
They wore masks last year, right? I mean.
Well, and if they don't want to wear the mask, they just stay home.
It's in your protocol, so.
I think so.
I just, I don't know about the sports. What are you guys' thoughts on the sports?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. I mean, you know, I don't see anything wrong with them attending practice in the context of watching, because they're at school all day. But to have them running up and down the floor, or doing something like that, I don't, I don't think so on that. In my opinion, but I.
It can't be easy to wear a mask and run up and down the floor anyway.
Especially if you're sick.
But if you're just asymptomatic.
I can tell you this. The kids that we have.
They're not asymptomatic.
They're not. They.
But if they are.
They have. I mean, I would say out of the, even today, the number of students that we are testing positive here, or they have tested positive, the parents aren't just testing them to testing them. They're taking them in because they don't feel well. So the Omicron variant, these kids, not that they're getting sick, sick, but they don't feel good. You know, so.
We have a lot of kids themselves go, I'm just not feeling right right now. I want to go get tested quick. And, you know, that's probably been on my end, the majority of who have tested positive. Just don't feel good. But the other thing with that is we've got a lot of kids testing that have influenza A, have something else. I mean, we've got kids throwing up for a day, and then they're great. And so we've got everything going through, so.
Yeah, I had two kids down there today, and they're like, I just got a fever. I know I got a fever. I can feel it. Oh, yeah, you do. Well, I'm going to go home. Yeah, that's a good idea. We tested them, and they were negative, but.
They'll probably be positive tomorrow.
They would, well, and that's, well, and we talked about that, because it's very possible that they can.
Or they could have something else, too. Other things go around, too, yeah.
So if you guys want to relent on the isolation, do the five days, but definitely, obviously, the protocol is five days. The next five days are in the mask. And again, if you have the weekend in there, guys, it's really only about three days. And then athletically, though, if you are a positive student, you're done 10 days. You cannot compete until that 10 days is up. Is that what I'm hearing you say? Is that fair?
They can go to practice, just not practice, like actually compete.
Yeah, you will not be competitive. Drill work, play a game, whatever. Which, that's fine. I mean, we'll carry that torch.
Do we, okay, Craig, as a coach, can we, if we feel like they don't, what, can we still tell them to stay home? From our side of it?
Say that again?
Okay, so, so what I'm saying is, okay, if I have a kid that's been, that has it for five days, why, and they can't compete, why would I want them around the other ones and take the chance of letting them get sick?
Yeah, totally agree then. Yes.
Do we have the right to tell them no?
I don't think it's any different than the nurse saying you need to go home, or.
Because I mean, if they're not practicing and actually physically doing things, yeah, there's the learning aspect of watching. I get it. But with this thing, why would you want, and from my standpoint, I don't know why I'd want them there.
That's true.
To some extent.
Okay, so take the onus off of you, because we're essentially throwing you under the bus to make the decision. If you don't want to be doing that, then.
Well, I'm just asking, okay, if you do this, and if somebody doesn't maybe necessarily act right, or I'm like, mm, do I have the right to tell them, and no one's going to get mad at me? That's, I guess, my.
Well, I can't promise someone's going to get mad at you, but you're allowed to tell them.
But they can't be there.
Or is it just easier?
I don't know, because I don't want to make that decision for all the coaches, though. I don't. I'm just asking.
If they can't compete anyway, what's the diff, I agree. I would be just fine with them that way.
I think the most important thing is to get them in school.
Yeah.
I mean, activities at this heart, that's got to be a second thing.
Practice, with the camera system, I can record the practice, and they can watch it at home.
That was my question, too, back here, Craig, is if I'm a coach, I don't.
But, but Mr. Bondi can't.
But they're just going to sit there anyway.
That's why I said, I don't want to speak for everybody, because my situation's different than.
I don't know. He's going to want them staying in that room with them.
Yeah.
Well, and I, what I would suggest for all of our coaches is if you have that concern, Mr. Bonnie wants to do it a certain way, Brooke wants to do it a certain way, whatever, then maybe you guys send an email out to your parents and just say, this is, you know, this is the policy of the board. They also understand that in certain circumstances, your child might be better off at home. Number one, to continue to heal and get better, because this takes something out of you, too, for the safety of everybody else. I might ask your child to stay at home. It's not a personal thing. I'm not trying to, just so that they're aware. Then at least it's out there, and then you can just tell them, hey, you know, we aren't going to do much in practice today. Go home. Get some extra sleep. Get better, so that way, when you come back, you're ready to work.
I would be completely fine just avoiding all of that, and just saying they can't come back for 10 days to practice.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that.
But I didn't want to do that. I mean, I don't want.
I don't think any of the, I think all the other coaches are going to agree with you.
Not really, but not ridicule, maybe not the right word, but if you do make that the way for everybody, we have the.
Well, it's just not a personal thing.
Yeah, my only say there is if you allow coaches to have the say, then it better be consistent.
Per kid in your system.
Yeah, we're not going to sit here and pick and choose on this deal.
Right, that's the.
Because I can tell you who's in the crosshairs on that deal.
So I think we should just make it 10 days they can't go to practice and call it good. Like, what's the point of doing it anyway? If they're just going to sit there, then just whatever. Right?
And it's no different than what we're doing right now.
Right, yeah.
So nobody's losing out on anything.
Let's just call it 10 days and be good.
It's easier for you to get back into the.
Yeah.
No, I'm good with that, too.
So activities, extracurricular, you will sit your entire 10 days with no participation, no attendance. Are we letting them travel? Nothing.
Nothing.
Not going to the games. If I'm away, you will not be associated.
I wouldn't want them.
One other thing I would like to bring up that just popped into my head, what about band and choir? During those five days, they come back in a mask, I would prefer that.
Yeah, I don't think it's any different.
We'll keep you in the study hall. Because of how that works, and I'm not, I'm talking even prac, yeah.
Yeah, same thing. It shouldn't be anything.
Yeah, we aren't going to.
So what about kids on the elementary end going to music and?
Music? I, yeah, I would, I mean, they'd either have to sit in the corner by themselves and try and sing from there, or else you just.
But not every elementary music class involves singing. There's instrumentation going on. There's some other things going on, but.
Maybe they can distance a little more or something.
The difficulty that you're going to have, the pushback going to be on that is, my second grade section is at music. It's my prep time. Oh, but you got to watch Timmy and Tommy, because they can't go.
Right.
But in the same token, you don't want them down there exasperating, you know, singing at the top of their lungs, and whether it's an activity in the music room, running around either. Because you just clarified that. So, I don't know, Mr. Fisher, you. Throwing you under the bus here.
Well, you have, you have two chairs in your office, don't you?
Bruning's got an even bigger.
It's 95.
Door is closed. Closed-door policy.
I don't know. That's a tough one.
I don't know. Do the best we can, you know.
Can you talk to the music teacher and have her find a way to sep, not separate, but, I don't know, maybe do something then if there's a student in the room that, that doesn't, they don't, you don't do that?
And you, it's not like it'd be a surprise. We would certainly know who those students are. You know, if she can, knows that she has one of those students that is coming back after day five, and it's music today, well, then, let's make sure we're not, you know, singing for 40 minutes. I mean, that's about the easiest way to do it, don't you think?
I think so.
Yeah. And she, I don't see any issues with her taking offense to that.
She's pretty creative. I think she could.
Yeah, creating a learning experience that will be accommodating.
I would prefer to do that, just, because otherwise, I mean, worst case scenario, it could turn into teachers having, you know, kids. I guess it'd only be for five extra days, but.
But you have 20 kids in your room. It could be a lot.
Do these, do these 10 days still all go from the first day of symptoms still? Correct?
Unless, yeah, unless.
So if you have or had symptoms, you isolate for five, day zero is the first day of symptoms?
Not, I mean, they didn't change any of that stuff. I'm just asking the question. Okay.
Okay, what do you got for a?
I don't have any. I just have to approve the return to, safe return to school plan with new changes.
I would just put, from a motions perspective, is to, a motion to, I had it, and I just lost it. I'm sorry. Make changes, you know, I don't think you have to outline specifically what the changes are, because I can send that information out to the public, is to make the necessary changes for CDC compliance with isolation, new CDC isolation guidelines, is what I would state. So change the safe return to school plan to adhere to CDC isolation quarantine compliance. Or SCOT compliance, but guidelines to adhere. That's the motion to. And then I'll, we'll craft it and put it, I'll get it to Tony, and we'll put it on the website, like the rest of it is. And then we'll push it out in a message to.
So to approve the safe return to school plan to adhere to the new CDC guidelines?
Yes.
Just like that?
For isolation.
Okay, for isolation.
For isolation.
Okay. And that's it? Then nothing else on the isolation work?
No, I think that would suffice.
Do you have to put the activity stuff in there, or not?
That's not changing, right?
That's not changing, so.
We're just going to leave it.
Exactly how it is now. Okay, got it. All right. We need a motion to approve.
So. Sorry. Action filed or any other discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried.
All right, so now we have action item B to approve resignation.
I, so I have a, this is a pending suitable replacement, so this is from Megan Conrad. Letters to inform you that I wish to resign as assistant volleyball coach. Through the past nine years of coaching volleyball, I've thoroughly enjoyed my experience, my children get older, they get busier with activities, which has furthered my decision for resignation. Appreciate all I've learned throughout the experience, thank you for allowing me part of the program and hope you're able to find a replacement with ease, so. The motion, you accept the the resignation based on a suitable replacement.
Yeah, pending finding a suitable replacement.
So she has to do it?
If you can't find it.
Find somebody to do it?
Exactly, that's why the the word is the way it is, the verbiage is the way it is, so. And we'll do, I mean, I haven't been practiced, but Mr. Norton has assured me that those situations, you've, you know, you you're turning over rocks and stones to find somebody who wants to do it. I mean, you do best effort to help her get out of it, so.
Last thing you want is someone in a job like that that does not want to do it.
That's not that she doesn't want to, I think that's just, it's time in her family life right now where she sees that self being a little bit difficult, so.
Okay.
So you need a motion and a second.
All right, need a motion to approve, please. I'm seconded.
Move by Weber, same by Neeble. To accept the resignation from Megan Conrad for assistant volleyball coach pending. Finding a suitable replacement, any other discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried.
All right, do we want to take a short recess or do we just want to go into executive session?
We need a recess to clear the room.
Okay, we have to take one, okay, can I just clear the room?
For you to go into executive session, yeah.
Well, no, I know, but do we have to take the recess?
That's what the recess is allowed for.
Just waiting for them to leave?
Yeah, my gosh.